What am I doing? Playing the things, right?
Kim Jong is preparing to go to war against us?
Well, of course. You know, you kick him in the nuts enough times, they're gonna do it. And that's all we do is constantly put 24/7. He's crazy. He's, I mean, what the fuck? Like, they're not even on the radar of anything relevant.
They have nothing we want. I don't know why the United States is...
Because we...
Just love to be belligerent.
But it's just part of the game.
Instigating fucks.
Yeah, just part of the game.
Hegemony.
What's the fucking code to get into this goddamn... Is it MacBook? Mac? Mac top. That's it. Mac top.
This is Mat Cop.
Thank you. Thank you. You're right. Mac top. I'm really dyslexic. Please work. Please work.
It's a good sign.
Yeah, it is a good sign.
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
You wanna write that down? M A C T O P?
I'll remember it. So, we're going into the hard drive. We're going into music. We're going into Levon Landevazo, probably. Or maybe down to WeHo. There it is. Landevazo. Boom. And then we have Garderama. Same thing. Garderama. He's the first one. Yes, he's the first one. Okay? So...
Trust him, by the way. Garderama. It's a snake in the grass.
He cut... He's an independent citizen, and that's his opinion.
That's right.
I don't have an opinion. Never did, never will.
That was completely mine independently.
Okay, I'm just gonna kill...
Harrison with you, and I want to welcome you to our further coverage of the West Hollywood candidates. These are the folks running for West Hollywood City Council. We're gonna be bringing on six of them in a row and giving them each 10 minutes solo time to talk about their platforms. Let's start with the first one. His name is Joe Garderama. And let's find out what his presentation will be for West Hollywood City Council.
Harrison with you, and as we continue giving each of the West Hollywood City Council candidates their full 10 minutes to discuss issues that are near and dear to them and make clear for tomorrow's election, tomorrow, March 3rd. We have next Joe Garderama. And Joe, you are a guy who is passionately involved and has, I believe, many solutions that are a little bit different from your other guys.
Yes. Thank you for having me, Carrie. I'm a little different than all the rest of the candidates because I'm the only candidate that practices governmental ethics law. And one of the things that I'd really like to bring to the city is meaningful ethics reform. Our city, unlike LA City, doesn't really have a substantial ethics ordinance in place. It has a very small campaign finance ordinance and a very small lobbying ordinance. When I get elected, one of my top priorities is going to be reconstituting the Campaign Finance Reform Committee as the Campaign Finance and Ethics Reform Committee and really put forth some meaningful and substantial changes in those areas.
Let's just touch Joe Garderama because we have people listening from all over the country, and, you know, ethics is a lovely word. If anybody studied Greek or even remembers who Socrates was, other than a Kardashian hairdresser, they may not quite get what we're talking about here. What seem to be the peculiar issues, ethics-wise, that we're looking at here?
Well, we need to look at three separate areas. The first area is campaign finance reform. If you look at the blogs, if you look at the articles that are written about this election and about many elections, it's about the undue influence of big donors. And that can happen in two ways. The first way it could happen is if a donor bundles money for you, where they, where, let's say, you know, West Hollywood has a $500 campaign contribution limit. A person goes around to all their friends and collects checks for $500 and gives them to you. That's one way. The other way that we actually have no control over, because the Supreme Court in the Citizens United case basically said that people can do this practice, is people go out and form independent expenditure committees. And we're seeing this in West Hollywood, where large donors give to committees that are completely independent of the candidates' campaigns and spend money in whatever amounts that they want and take in money in whatever amounts they want on candidates. So, what I'd like to do is put forth a meaningful set of campaign finance reforms, where we lower the individual contribution limit to campaigns, where we establish a matching funds trust fund in the city to match contributions from West Hollywood donors, who are individuals, and thereby amplify the voices of West Hollywood citizens. I also want to put into place a mandatory requirement that council members be required to disclose contributions from applicants and lobbyists when they come before them at city council meetings.
Ooh.
And I'd like to put into place an electronic filing system. Right now, our campaign finance reports are scanned in PDF format on our website by our city clerk. If we had an electronic filing system, the data would be uploaded onto the city's website, and then the public could search through that data in a meaningful way without having to print out reports and having to look at PDFs.
The, uh, the meaningful way, meaning the T-word. Transparency.
Yes, exactly. The more information that is out there about these elections, the better the public will feel that they have a good grasp on who these candidates are and who is funding them.
And you are one of the candidates. We are talking right now to Joe Garderama. He is a West Hollywood City Council candidate, the election being tomorrow, March 3rd, and he's got five more minutes, a little over five more minutes, to continue to talk about the things that are important to him, that he speaks on behalf of his constituents. Joe, talk about more of what you'd like to see happen in West Hollywood.
Sure. I'll touch upon two other areas of ethics reform very briefly. Number one is lobbyist reform. Our lobbyists in West Hollywood are currently required to register as lobbyists, but they're not required to report their financial activity. In the city of LA, for example, lobbyists have to disclose how much money they're being paid by their clients to lobby the city, and actually what matters their lobbying. We don't have that sort of information in West Hollywood. If we did in electronically searchable format, the public would know who is being lobbied, when and how much people are paying to lobby their city council members. That will go a long way to restoring public trust in our government.
And, and just to jump in, I think we have about, what, a billion with a B and a half dollars worth of construction projects? We have, what, 2,000 voters roughly? So, what is that, three-quarters of a million dollars per vote, if you look at it cynically?
Well, yeah. I mean, it roughly translates, in order to win an election, you need about 2,500 votes to win. So, yeah, it's, it's quite a staggering amount of money compared to the number of people that actually vote in our elections. Which leads me to another area that I care very deeply about, and that is making sure that our voter turnout really increases. One thing that I'd like to propose is that West Hollywood become a pilot program in the state for an all-mail-in ballot election. We have some lobbying to do in Sacramento in order to accomplish that, because currently our state elections law does not allow for it. But if we make a couple tweaks to the state elections code by deleting maybe a few sentences of one provision, West Hollywood could become a city that sends a mail-in ballot to every single registered voter, whether they're an absentee voter or not. And that voter can then decide whether they're going to vote in the election. And I suggest that we even prepay the postage on those envelopes, so you don't even need a stamp. If we do this and also provide a few locations in the city where people, if they really want to vote in person, can go vote in person, not just on Election Day, but in the month leading up to the election. If we do this, we can substantially lower our elections cost and increase voter participation. Because in Oregon, where this has been tried, they have seen a tremendous uptick in voter turnout. And if we have more voter turnout in this city, we all win, because we're gonna have a government that's more reflective of the voters themselves, and it's just gonna be good for everyone.
Harrison with you. This is The Smart Show. We are on the Progressive Radio Network on the East Coast. We are on KPFK 90.7 FM on the West Coast. We're talking to Joe Garderama. He is running for West Hollywood City Council. We have just a couple of more minutes here.
Right now, there is a state requirement that requires elected officials, when they solicit charitable, not campaign, but charitable contributions from outside donors, they must file a form with the city clerk. If you ask our city clerk, those forms are few and far between, that they're actually filed with her by our elected officials. I'd actually like to increase awareness of this provision of state law with our city council members and lower the threshold from 5,000 to 1,000. So, if you're out there raising money for your pet charity, or you're out there raising money for a charity that you happen to work for, public should know about it.
Including, let's say you were an attorney, for instance, and that charity were heavily donated by one of your lobbyists, and then that very charity retained you as legal counsel. That would be a conflict of sorts, I imagine. Undisclosed.
I mean, I'm really talking about when applicants and lobbyists give to a council member's pet charity, or maybe for the, the creation of a, you know, specific city project.
Yes, yes. As we talked to Joe Garderama and wrapping it up, anything else you'd like to let us know that is a great reason to support you?
Yeah, I've made my campaign about transparency. And, and one of the things that I have done virtually everywhere I go is I give out my cellphone number. And my cellphone number, in case anyone would like to call me, is 310-213-3776. I invite the public to call me, to have a conversation with me, to sit down. I'll go to coffee with anyone. And I really want to maintain that sort of openness and responsiveness after I'm elected in City Hall.
There is a difference that you are not only making yourself available and being transparent, but it's, it's, it sounds like you're committing to remain that way if elected.
Absolutely. Not only would I remain that way, but my city council deputy, if we have city council deputies going forward, would also be required to be extremely responsive and extremely transparent in his or her job responsibilities. So, Carrie, at the end of the day, this is really about electing council members that are going to be open, that reflect the values of our citizens, and that are really going to listen to our citizens and residents and ask themselves, I'm gonna put myself in the resident's place, in the citizen's place, and make the best decision for them and not be beholden to special interests.
Joe Garderama, do you have a website where people can follow you?
I do. It's JG4WeHo.com. That's JG, the number four, WeHo, W E H O, dot com.
Joe Garderama is running for West Hollywood City Council, elections being tomorrow, on Tuesday, March 3rd. Harrison with you. We are talking again with candidates running for West Hollywood City Council. You'll see next to me my producer, Brian Hamilton, who's joined in to help out and make the phone calls happen. Let's go next to Tristan Schucraft. He also is running for West Hollywood City Council. Each has a unique position. And Tristan, I want to welcome you to the show.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Glad to have you here. And we're gonna give you about 10 minutes to really tell us what it is that you'd like to see in your new version of West Hollywood.
Right, well, I think West Hollywood's a great city, but there's a lot we can do to, to make it better. My, my background is in technology, so I'd like to leverage technology to empower the residents and create more transparency and accountability within City Hall. Today, I find a lot of the same people at a lot of the city meetings, which is great, they're very engaged, but unfortunately, they don't represent the masses of West Hollywood. And I think more people would be engaged if we had alternatives, like an app where they could see the latest issues, vote on the latest, latest issues, and see how the city council votes on issue, each issue.
And we have these big button issues. We have parking, which is this ubiquitous irritant. We have people's housing. We have all these things that everyone seems to be discussing, and you're right in the middle of it, Tristan.
Yeah, I mean, well, affordable housing is a key, key platform of mine. Affordable housing, I think, is the greatest challenge facing West Hollywood today. I think that with some sensible development, we can address the, the housing needs of our community, all, together with a net zero policy when it comes to the number of affordable housing units. And what a net zero policy is, is, let's say you're tearing down a building with eight affordable housing units and building a new one that has 20. By law, you would only be required to have four affordable housing units. And with my proposal of a net zero loss would be, regardless of the size of the new building, there would have to be eight affordable housing units. So, you wouldn't lose any with new development. And then finally, I'd like to see micro units. They've been very successful in other cities. They're 20 to 30% cheaper than traditional rents and allow young people that are just starting out to live near downtown, and those maybe like seniors on a fixed income to stay where they're at.
Tristan, I'm just gonna jump in for a second, because not everyone speaks this language fluently yet. A micro unit, like, what's a micro unit? Sounds small. I guess that's about right.
Hence the micro, yes. Micro units are typically 350 square feet, so it has a separate bathroom, but you're, it's an open floor plan. So, you have a kitchen, your bedroom is essentially a studio with a separate bathroom. And the focus with micro units is on the communal areas. So, encouraging people to, you know, hang out with each other rather than in their, their apartments. But they're all new builds and typically highly efficient.
We have people wondering, well, this guy, smart, you know, technology, all of these things that are really universal for all of us. I've got, what, three iPhones, two iPads. Hardly a mystery, definitely a luxury. What is it that sets you apart, they wonder?
Overall, I think that, you know, I'm not a part of the political establishment. This is, you know, I'm a technology and business background coming in with no pre-established obligations. I'm not worried about challenging the status quo or any existing power structures. I guess at the end of the day, I'm not a politician. I really see West Hollywood from the outside, and I'm, I've got a lot of ideas and willing to think outside the box, and more importantly, listen to the residents and what they need.
What are the residents telling you, Tristan?
You know, I've been walking the streets for, for months now, and I really do get a lot of the best ideas from the, from the residents and the community at large. You know, they want more transparency and accountability within City Hall. They want affordable housing. Of course, the big one always is parking and traffic, and the small businesses, and, well, all businesses in West Hollywood really want a streamlined process for opening their doors, and once the doors are opened, streamlined process for obtaining permits and maybe remodels, et cetera.
Harrison with you. We are talking to Tristan Schucraft. As we continue our candidates forum, we're giving everybody 10 minutes to talk about what it is that they see for West Hollywood and why it might be different in ways that a lot of people are hoping for, that's for sure. And Tristan Schucraft is with us right now. He's running for West Hollywood City Council. We have a couple of more minutes, Tristan. There probably are a handful of things you'd really like to express to your voters.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, you asked just a moment ago what, you know, some of my top priorities are, and we, we touched on two of them. I think parking and traffic, there's a lot of opportunities for improvement. And these, there's opportunities for improvement now. I mean, I'd love to see a bike share program, highly successful in cities around the world. You know, as far as parking, definitely rolling back the meters would be beneficial. Angled parking on some of our wider streets would increase parking substantially. Not, not applicable to all streets, but with those streets that have the space, it's an easy solution. Employee parking, I would like the city to subsidize employee parking for the local businesses. You know, up to about 74% of traffic in downtown areas is people circling, looking for parking. So, if we can get the employees to park more quickly and have more parking available with better signage for the, the consumer or visitor, we can alleviate parking and traffic at the same time.
You know, you mentioned biking. I know you lived in Amsterdam for a while, and I was over there for the COP15 or COP13 Environmental Summit. Rode a bike for a week in the rain and whatever, but I'll tell you what, what a great way to get around. It cuts the time by 50, 60%. Talk a little bit more about what a bikable West Hollywood might look like.
It's a great way to get around, but not in the middle of a Dutch winter. I've had experience in doing that. You know, the great thing about West Hollywood is we have great weather. It rarely rains, so it's just, it's perfect for us. But, you know, you, I live on the east side of West Hollywood. If I want to go to the dry cleaners or visit friends from the west side, I pick up a bike, bike over to the, to the west side, drop it off, and then maybe Uber home if I want later in the evening, or I can take a, pick up a bike and bike back. But these have been highly successful, you know, throughout the world. I mean, yes, Amsterdam, I, I had a bike myself, and that's really how everybody gets around. So, I think it's just a matter of changing the culture, but it is. It's an enjoyable experience, and, you know, you feel good after biking to work.
And let's have a, a final thought from you, Tristan, as we continue talking with different candidates for West Hollywood City Council. Tristan Schucraft is with us right now here on GoHarrison. You can follow us, by the way, on Twitter, @GoHarrison, Facebook, keyword GoHarrison, Instagram, same. We are live streaming on the Progressive Radio Network on the East Coast, also on KPFK 90.7 FM on the West Coast, 98.7 FM in San Diego, 93.7 in Santa Barbara. And Tristan, let's wrap it up. Give us the, the final push, because tomorrow is Election Day.
Yeah, tomorrow is Election Day, so I encourage everyone to come out. Thank you for having me on today. You know, I, I love West Hollywood, but, you know, like other residents, I'm concerned about overdevelopment. You know, I want to walk across the street and, and do that safely. I really love the city, but we can do a lot to make it a better place to live, work, and play. The three key issues and priorities that the community has told me to focus on is resident power with transparency and accountability in City Hall, and I'll, I'll do that. I'll be a champion for affordable housing, and I have real solutions that can be implemented now to, to address our parking and traffic challenges. So, again, encourage everyone to come out and vote, and I ask for your vote, and hope I have the opportunity to represent the residents and community at large here in West Hollywood City Council.
Tristan Schucraft is running for West Hollywood City Council.
Tired of trying to find a low-interest loan, especially when you're unemployed? Instead of getting a job, rely on the finance. Instead of getting a job, rely on the financial lending wizards at LendingTreeBranch.com.
LendingTreeBranch.com was great because they were able to immediately give me a list of crooked bankers who wanted my business so they could screw me over royal. Now I'm further in debt, but I have the money to do the things I want, I think. Thanks, LendingTreeBranch.com.
LendingTreeBranch.com is on the web, and as you all know, anything done through the cyberspace of the internet with no tangible physical location is totally trustworthy.
I didn't want to be humiliated by having some suit-wearing financial guy tell me to my face that I'm not approved for a home equity loan, so I went to LendingTreeBranch.com, and I got a form letter from a computer-generated database that told me I'm not approved.
So when you need extra cash to fix up your home, toss into an offshore tax-free account, or pay off bills for all the other crap you bought from telemarketers, call us. We're LendingTreeBranch.com. Not affiliated with Oliver Branch Financial, Branch Lenders Incorporated, or First Tree Financial Network.
Hi, this is Senator Barbara Boxer, and I have to say that listening to Harrison makes my day.
Preventing truth decay. Live from Hollywood, this is Harrison.
There we go. How about a little audio with that video? You know, why not? It's 2015. As we continue talking with the candidates running for West Hollywood City Council, we're now going to go to Matt Ralston. He is another candidate who is different from all the others. That's the unique and good thing about it, is many have different kinds of vision. And Matt, I want to welcome you to GoHarrison.
Thank you. I'm a big fan of the show. Thanks for having me.
Glad to have you aboard, and let's just jump right off the high dive. You've got about 10 minutes. You have a lot of ideas that you think would help create a better West Hollywood.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, first and foremost, we're talking about a city that's been, you know, well-run in the sense that it's facilitated, you know, a budget surplus. It's one of the best cities in the country, frankly. However, it's a precarious situation when you have to slam the people involved, but in this case, it's warranted. We're talking about blatant corruption. We're talking about unhindered special interest influencing the council. So basically, when I talk to voters, the first thing they bring up is overdevelopment because, you know, they live here and they care about traffic and parking and everything. And that's the proletariat's main concern. Yet, the council's main concern is building higher and higher, as you can see by the fact that they get elected by mainly from money that comes from real estate interests and all of their campaigns, but at some point, they're managed by a lobbyist who works on behalf of the real estate industry. So anytime you have a situation where the elected officials' vision doesn't jive with that of citizens, you have a problem. So that's why I decided to run.
Well, it makes good sense, and everyone is definitely aware of that. Nobody likes it. It is legal, thanks to Citizens United, not ethical, but legal. And I imagine you would probably be looking to put in some provisions to stop that luxury or at least the secrecy of it, right?
I mean, all it would take, you know, it's funny to me that, you know, the mayor, who I do think is a good person, but, and all of the other candidates seem to have this notion that they should speak against this, yet all it would take, frankly, as I was trying to explain to someone earlier, all it would take is to draft one resolution to not accept the contributions. Problem solved. Why don't you stop talking about it and take action? That's all it would take, you know, and that's why I haven't accepted any contributions. And, you know, frankly, I think that when you hear about the current council speaking of finance reform, it's completely facetious and disingenuous because, you know, I understand that with Citizens United, you don't always have the wherewithal to know where your contributions are coming from, but why don't you just say, hey, I don't want this? I guarantee you they would stop. Guarantee you.
Well, there's something about sunlight that makes the roaches scatter. We're talking right now to Matt Ralston. He is running for West Hollywood City Council. You can follow us, by the way, on Twitter, @GoHarrison, Instagram, keyword GoHarrison, same thing, Facebook, GoHarrison. And he differentiates himself from the other candidates. They all really are similar in their passion and love for West Hollywood, somewhat different in their approaches. Matt, another one is affordable housing. This is a renter's city, developed, created, and born to do just that, and a lot of people feel like they're getting priced out now, even if they've lived here 30 years. Unaffordable. If they move from one apartment to the next, it goes to market right, boom, it's all over.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, what we're getting is due to special interest contribution on the council, what we're getting is a sort of beholden, a culture of our council being beholden to corporate interests. And as America is going right now, the middle class is shrinking, the poor are getting more poor, and the rich are getting more rich, especially the richest. And we're seeing that reflected in West Hollywood as well. So, you know, we're not going to have affordable housing until our council decides that they want to walk the walk as far as representing people and not businesses. And by businesses, I mean corporations, which have no ties to this community.
We have found from talking to the other candidates so far, by the way, we are talking to Matt Ralston, running for West Hollywood City Council. We've heard from other candidates that one of the big issues that people are dealing with is this traffic problem, where we, in this mile-long city, basically the size of Key West, we get 120,000 cars passing through a day. People are getting clipped and nicked, a real concern for them, it seems.
Well, yeah, I mean, so there's a few options. You know, you're going to have traffic because, you know, we're living in a suburb there, not in the middle of the desert or anything. One option, if the residency decides that that's what they want, is to do a toll with residence exemption. However, that would just screw up traffic for the rest of the city, and I'd like to, you know, have respect for my fellow Angelinos, as we are in Los Angeles County. So I think that anyone talking about traffic until we seriously start talking about rail or alternative means of transportation is pandering.
Sounds like you're interested in light rail or public transportation that's more efficient.
Well, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we're surrounded by Beverly Hills, which, well, I phrased that wrong, but we're metaphorically, you know what I mean? No, but Beverly Hills is on our border, and they have a history of racism, which prevents them from cooperating with anything going down Santa Monica Boulevard. And unfortunately, you know, thank God on their side, so I don't know what to say to them, but can you cuss, you can't cuss, whatever, screw them.
And as we finish up here talking to Matt Ralston, running for West Hollywood City Council, you're hearing from your constituents, some of their big-ticket items, if you will, their big concerns. What are some of the ones that you want to mention on their behalf?
Well, you know, I think that everything comes from the top down. I mean, you know, for example, our council is concerned with building new hotels, and that's fine. Everyone knows that that's what their interests and their contributions have dictated. So I find it just a symptom of that problem when crosswalks are dangerous, and we can't have, say, crosswalks because our council members don't walk across the street. You know, they spend half the time in Palm Springs or whatever. I don't know. I've never seen them around. I'm the most visible person in this community. I go to, you know, straight bars, gay bars, parades, sit-ins, vigils, whatsoever, never seen one of them. So I don't think that they walk across the street, and I think that because their interests aren't aligned with ours, I think that's why we don't have, say, crosswalks and Sunset Boulevard is being demolished.
Well, I want to thank you so much. We've been talking to Matt Ralston. He is running for West Hollywood City Council. Coming up next, Joe Allendorfer. This is GoHarrison.
GoHarrison.com.
John. John Allendorfer.
Tell them just how you feel with the Just How I Feel collection from Hallmark Cards.
To my ex-husband, the water flows, it covers your head. You drown and die a horrible death. Signed, Fran.
Hallmark, when you care enough to send the very best, and when you don't.
Hi, this is Edward James Olmos, and I'm a Harrison Hellraiser. You're listening to Harrison on the Edge. Enjoy.
Everyone's watching the seductive new hit show, Desperate Housewives. Now ABC has an even more desperate spin-off, Desperate Grandmothers.
Hey, sunny boy, what do you say I take out my dentures and show you a good time? Woo!
Gotta go!
These housewives put the old in bold. Desperate Grandmothers.
Hello?
Why don't you come on over and see my sexy new lingerie? I crocheted myself.
Uh, wrong number, wrong number!
Desperate Grandmothers, the show that shines new light on the swinging seniors in your neighborhood.
Ah, you were great in The Sack, Junior. Mind if I turn on the lamp now?
Uh, please don't.
Desperate Grandmothers, Sundays at 9, only two hours after grandma's bedtime.
Preventing truth decay. Live from Hollywood, this is Harrison.
And as we continue talking with our West Hollywood City Council candidates, behind me is my producer, Brian Hamilton, sitting quietly and behaving, by the way. We're going to next go to John Allendorfer. Again, we're giving each 10 minutes to talk about what they would like to see in the West Hollywood of their choice. And John, I want to welcome you to the show.
And I thank you. I thank you very much.
Let's just, as we have with everyone else, let's just jump right off the high dive and tell us what you'd like to see in West Hollywood.
Okay. What I would like to see in West Hollywood is, one, to keep it affordable, workable, and walkable. And this all relates to the big word, the big D, development. How does development keep these three things possible for West Hollywood? Well, first of all, development should not be a bad word, it should be a good word, and it should work for the citizens, the residents. As I said before, I think the last form, that all politics are local, so each neighborhood in West Hollywood is unique. If you're on the west side, in the middle, on the east side, if you're a renter, if you're a homeowner, each neighborhood is unique, and the city has to correspond to that. So what I would like to see as a council member, to work more directly with the neighborhood and to see what kind of development they want. Do we do another apartment unit? Do we do a big shopping, do we do small shops? And that is how the council is going to work with developers. I know, you know, the latest campaign donation report shows that this Tuesday election, it continues to be dominated by donations from out-of-town interests, you know, which includes real estate developers, billboard companies, and they need the council's approvals for some projects. And again, it has to come down to the local level. There has to be strong communication between the city council members and the residents of what they want in that neighborhood. And these developers, they have to respect the neighborhood in regard to traffic, providing parking for employees, physical and architectural landscaping, noise levels. And what I find exciting, I've been the manager of my apartment complex for the last eight years, and I've always been a renter, and I probably will always be a renter, but I've developed an affinity for the renters. And I have 27 units that I manage. I don't know, I manage. But it's so refreshing and exciting to work with these tenants, especially people coming into West Hollywood who are living here, moving here for the first time. You know, what, you know, affordability? You know, how can they afford these apartments? What employment do we have for them here? West Hollywood is an entertainment town, the industry, and we have the hotels, we have the bars, we have the nightclub. But we also need to work another industry. So why can't the IT, the information technology employment come here? The big red building in the Pacific Design Center, that's empty. Why can't that be used?
Somehow.
Pardon me?
It sits empty somehow, so to be able to build a grand structure in the middle of the town that sits empty while there's homeless people on the sidewalk seems a little incongruent to some.
Right. So I'm saying, why can't the council, together with the NTA, and if we have to work with Charles Combs from the PDC, but, you know, there should be some employment there. Again, this is a Hollywood industrial town. Why can't we get people behind the camera working in there on digital composition, writers? Before, we had the writers in this town, in West Hollywood. Why can't we get that back? And I want to see, I want that to come back. I want to work with the young people as well as the older people like myself, seniors who still want to live in West Hollywood and will not be outcasts. But, you know, the majority of people coming into West Hollywood, it's 25 to 34, and that's the majority of the population. So let's work with them, let's attract employment so they can afford the apartments that are going for, you know, 1,200 to 1,500 a month just for a one-bedroom.
Harrison with you. We are talking to John Allendorfer. He is running for West Hollywood City Council. We are having six on today, each a full 10 minutes to talk about their vision for what they would like West Hollywood to become or return to, as some have pointed out. And John, I think one of the big issues that everyone is looking at is the traffic, is the crosswalks. May seem irrelevant if you're living in Westwood or somewhere, but West Hollywood is a walking neighborhood, one of the two best ones apparently in the whole state of California. So a walking neighborhood and crosswalks is really a big deal.
Right, and we want to keep that. I know, what, two years ago, we got the award for the best walkable city in California, and we want to keep that. And this is kind of a far-out idea. I think some crosswalks should be eliminated. I think people should learn to walk the block and go to the stoplight. I also thought that, this is, again, thinking out of the box, why can't we do bridges over some places on Santa Monica Boulevard? They can be made attractive, but let's have bridges where people can walk and not face the danger of a crosswalk. So that was one of my propositions.
And it allows the traffic to actually not come to a halt four times in a row in West Hollywood and nowhere else.
Exactly. And, you know, I mean, we're just about 1.9 miles, and even when you're in Beverly Hills, when you're by the Beverly Hills City Hall, you know, traffic starts to build up. So I really think also that we have to work with LA and Beverly Hills. This is, it's a three-city problem, because just when you hit the bottleneck at Doherty, you know, the bottleneck is formed in Beverly Hills. So I think, especially working with Beverly Hills, there has to be some kind of, you know, I don't know what to say, but we have to work with them and try and solve the problem because it's only going to get worse. There's not going to be less cars, there's going to be more cars.
We've got about one minute left as we talk to John Allendorfer, running for West Hollywood City Council, and what final thought would you like to share with your voters?
Well, I love this city. It's been a great city for me. I've been a 36-year resident, 36 years here, and I was involved in the city from the beginning. And I want to devote my time, concern, and passion. I want to work with the young people. I want to keep this as a progressive, workable, that somebody can come here, they can find an apartment, they can find a job, and they can walk down, if they're lucky, to their job, and they can walk to their friends, they can walk to the entertainment, to the nightclub, the life that is here. It's a dream, and I want to keep that dream. It's been a dream. I've been able to do it. I worked for eight years at the Pacific Design Center. I was able to walk and work in my place and get there in 10 minutes. I want to keep that going for West Hollywood and make it an exciting city to the same time, because what happens in West Hollywood, the rest of California, if not the world, pays attention to it.
John Allendorfer is running for West Hollywood City Council. Coming up in one minute, we're going to be talking to Larry Block, also running for West Hollywood City Council, here on this special live coverage, talking to the various candidates, tomorrow being Election Day. Stand by.
Thank you.
From Hollywood, it's Harrison.
We're out here on the streets of the city asking people what they'd do for a conduct bar. Excuse me, sir.
Yeah?
What would you do for a conduct bar?
I don't know.
Would you kiss me?
Kiss you?
Just a quick peck on the cheek. It's for a conduct bar. It's for a conduct bar.
Okay. Okay, give me my conduct bar.
Oh, you can do better than that.
What do you mean?
Kiss me full on the lips.
On the lips?
For a conduct bar.
Okay. Now, give me that conduct bar. People are starting to look.
All right, I'll give you your conduct bar, but first you have to kiss me open-mouthed with your tongue tickling my uvula.
Ugh!
It's for a conduct bar.
Oh, God. Okay. What are you looking at, ladies? It's for a conduct bar!
Uh, yes, about that.
What?
Well, you see, I don't actually have a conduct bar.
You don't?
No, but it was very nice meeting you. Very, very nice.
I'm going to kill you.
Chocolate-coated ice cream, so rich and thick, there's no room for a stick. Who would you do for a conduct bar?
Harrison Hellraiser.
Hi, this is Ed Asner, and I'm listening to Harrison on the Edge as all good Harrison Hellraisers do.
Preventing truth decay. Truth Decay. Live from Hollywood, this is Harrison.
And it is 40 minutes past the hour. Harris with you, your new best friend. Live coverage right now as we talk to the various candidates running for West Hollywood City Council. You'll see right behind me, my producer, Brian Hamilton. He's popped in to actually work the phones because we're going 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 on this. And next, we're going to go to Larry Block. Each is getting 10 minutes to talk about their vision of what they'd like to see in their version of West Hollywood. And Larry, I want to welcome you to Go Harrison.
Hello, how are you? Thank you very much for having me.
Glad to have you here, and we're just asking him when to leap immediately off the high dive. And tell us what you'd like to see for West Hollywood.
Oh, there's so much. You're going to ask me question by question or do I just talk-talk?
We'll just have a conversation. So let's just start with what would you like to see this city become or return to?
Well, that's a great question. Well, truthfully, I want to keep us the capital of the LGBT world and make sure we protect at our roots the core of the values that we started with as a city, which was originally, we had a population that, for LGBT people, for Russian immigrants, and for transgender people, they had a home here. And if you were oppressed, you found your beacon of hope in a place called West Hollywood. And dream needs to still continue. There are so many other pieces of, you know, besides that, including, you know, Sunset Boulevard and the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and everything we stand for as a city, as the entertainment capital and the nightlife capital and how to make us thrive and keep small business here as we're growing so much and how to continue social services and the core of what makes West Hollywood special.
We're talking to Larry Block. He is running for West Hollywood City Council tomorrow, Election Day, March 3, 2015. And Larry, each of you has a similar passion and love for West Hollywood, different approaches, however, to handling some of the big problems. Your constituents come to you and they say, hey, this could be fixed or that could be made better. What are some of the big things that you have a vision for?
Well, I'm a small business owner. I have a shop on Santa Monica Boulevard. So I've been boots-on-the-ground when it comes to small business and issues concerning small business, which truthfully, the neighbors in the neighborhood stop by all the stores, stop by the store and talk about things that matter to them. So that's been going on long before I ran for city council when many a customer would come and say, you should run for city council because I was basically a city activist fighting for various things, which include, one of the big things that I would say that I am furious about is our parking situation. When we went back a year and a half ago and moved to meters till midnight, raised the meter fees, took away free Sunday parking, the environment changed for people coming into town. And people get really pissed off at the parking situation. So I'd like to roll back the meters, I'd like to restore free Sunday parking. I fought for free parking at the West Hollywood City Garages for at least one hour. And I advocate for an all-city parking pass that allow West Hollywood residents the opportunity, with your resident in the city and you have a resident pass, you should be able to park at all the West Hollywood City Garages for free and eat at our restaurants and shop at our stores and, you know, eat shop play, as the Chamber of Commerce says in West Hollywood. It was such a divergent policy where the Chamber of Commerce launched the Eat Shop Play program in the same months that the city council approved the increase in the park meters. The big joke around town was it really was never Eat Shop Play, it was Eat Shop Park. But I'd like to go back to make it a city where our neighbors and our residents would shop in our city, shop in our stores and feel, you know, the love of West Hollywood by, you know, joining each other, you know, and being together and sort of running to Beverly Hills. Signals that people would press the button, the cars would stop, we'd cross them, and the people, the traffic could flow as much as it wants until a pedestrian, you know, presses the light and they're going to cross. So basically, the traffic keeps flowing and people don't jump in front of the cars. So what you see now is you see the short-term measures because the council opted for two studies in two years. Instead of counting the dead people, we could have made a decision and had these long-term measures, you know, approved. We went for the short-term measures because we're still awaiting another study. So yes, those midterm, short-term measures are a mess and those things are all over the street and they're getting hit every day and replaced at $400 a pop. But truthfully, our pedestrian accidents went to the lowest rate in 10 years last month. We were down from 18 pedestrian accidents the month before, down from 20 to 35 the all previous 12 months before, and last month was three. The lowest pedestrian-to-vehicle accident is only one bicycle-to-car accident. So a total of four vehicle, car, vehicle pedestrian, vehicle bicycle accidents. So they're all working, they're not pretty, but they are making people alert.
All right.
But we do get the study back and crosswalks and public safety is one of my main issues.
Let's also talk, as we wrap up your time, Larry Block, running for West Hollywood City Council. A man on fire with passion, that's for sure. Let's talk about affordability in this city, a place where a lot of people have lived for 30 years. And if they move to another apartment, it goes to market rate, they can't afford it, or their landlords want to sell off the building and push them out. A lot of people are afraid.
Yeah, this is terrible. This is terrible. The best, you know, market forces are at work. Low interest rates drive a lot of the development. New development causes, you know, properties next that are high-priced, new development apartments next to lower price, then come up market and the prices tend to rise. My biggest concern in this issue is the most vulnerable, the seniors and people with disabilities. And I have advocated in front of the Rent Stabilization Board, an idea that I hope goes national. And that is if you're a senior, a person with disabilities, and you live on an upper floor, second or third floor unit, and you can't walk, that you have an option to move down to the lower floor, first floor unit, if there is an available unit by what is called a swapping proposal. And this swapping proposal is working its way through our Aging in Place Initiative in West Hollywood City Hall now, which is now being put up for the study session. And it is the first new idea coming in front of our Rent Stabilization Board in 14 years. So affordability is a very big issue, but it's even worse when you talk about the most vulnerable people in the city. And I'm a partially disabled person, I'm binding one eye, and you know, I wonder what would happen to me if I had to move. And this is a problem nationally, not only just West Hollywood, but truthfully, West Hollywood is hot and the real estate market is hot. And a one-bedroom can go for $1,800. So, you know, it's, so how do we protect the people who built this city in this rising market? And that's one of my main concerns, human services and public safety.
Harrison with you. I want to thank you so much, Larry Block, for having joined us. You are running for West Hollywood City Council, and I appreciate your having joined us today.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for the great, the great way you hosted the debate. You were fantastic.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Harrison with you. Coming up in about 20 seconds, we're going to be talking to Christopher Landevazo. He is our final candidate in this six candidate live coverage, giving them a chance to give their platforms before tomorrow. The other ones did not make themselves available to join in, so these are the six that did, which also included initially Lauren Meister and John D'Amico. We had them on last week. So this is our final run. Coming up, we've got Christopher Landevazo. He is also running for West Hollywood City Council.
From Hollywood, it's Harrison.
In our continuing conversation with West Hollywood City Council candidates, this is Christopher Landevazo. He was known some years ago for having put his hat in initially in the ring. He has returned with the same assiduous appetite to be part of the solution. And Christopher, why don't you just jump on in and tell us what's your plan?
Well, Kerry, thank you very, very much for having me on. As you were just telling your listeners, I did run for West Hollywood City Council in 2013 and garnered a lot of support during that campaign. Obviously, we were still wrestling with many of the same issues that we are today, you know, and transparency being one. Obviously, we have issues with traffic, we have issues concerning development. And quite honestly, it comes down to leadership being willing to reflect the values of our community. And I am very proud to be running a different kind of campaign this time around in which I'm self-funding to avoid the types of conflict that other candidates will have from taking money from developers and special interests. And I'm truly hoping that the community of West Hollywood will actually support a leader who is kind of standing up to the status quo.
So it sounds like you're making a commitment not to take money from developers or any outside interests, but literally peer-to-peer with the community?
I am, and I've taken it a step further. You know, last election, I was the fourth highest raiser of funds in the election. As you well know, almost $700,000 had been raised by candidates accepting money from, you know, all over the place. And most of that money not coming from our community. I have actually self-funded. I've, you know, taken $5,000 of my own money and I have not taken a dime or dollar from anybody else. And I'm not asking anybody to donate their money, I just, I want their vote. And that is to keep me free from, from having to bend to special interests or developers or any other kind of outside influence and allow me to do the work for the people of West Hollywood.
Harrison with you. You are listening to the voice of Christopher Landevazo. He is a candidate for West Hollywood City Council, elections being tomorrow, that being March 3. And we're talking about his platform, his campaign. He's getting his 10 minutes here to really express it any way he wants. Any of the big issues that you're particularly passionate about that you know your fellow constituents have on their radar?
Well, Kerry, you know, public safety, obviously, as being a deputy sheriff, is one of my main priorities. And it is one of the things that our city is truly tasked to do, is providing public safety to our residents. You know, most people don't realize that we rank 41 out of 270 odd cities in the county of Los Angeles on the Violence Crime Index, which means that you're actually safer walking the streets of Inglewood than you are in the streets here at West Hollywood. And that's truly an issue.
How is that, how does that work? Our fantasy is that West Hollywood is, whatever our fantasy is, wow! I mean, that's quite a statistic.
It is, and it's quite shocking, you know. We, you know, couple that with the fact that we've had incidences even this week where we had a pedestrian that was almost killed in one of our crosswalks. And that was an issue that we were wrestling with in 2013 that still has not been fixed. You know, around election time, you have a lot of people coming out saying that they have a lot of good ideas to help fix these things, but when the rubber meets the road, there really is no follow-through. And I am a person of action, you know, that is one of the things that I carry with me from my military background and my time in the Navy. And it's followed me into my law enforcement career, and that is truly finding workable solutions and using common sense to make decisions. And, you know, if you, in 2013, I actually published, I was one of the, actually the only candidate to publish a community plan that outlined exactly what I would do to fix issues here in West Hollywood. And that can actually be found on my website at wehopeforall.com. That has been updated, and you know, we were successful in having some of the council members actually adopt some of the ideas from the 2013 plan, but not all of them. And if you look at all the ideas that are being, you know, promulgated today by candidates who are running, stating that these are their ideas, well, those ideas were suggested by me back in 2013. And, you know, I'm truly hoping that our, that our community and our residents will actually go back and truly study and say, you know what, Landevazo really does have a plan. These are absolutely solutions that work because the other candidates are using them as their own and truly electing a person who is going to be independent and really able just to listen to our community and our residents and make good choices for all of us here in West Hollywood.
Let's talk about the sidewalk crossings and people getting hit and solutions, as you mentioned. You being part of the Sheriff's Department have an inside view really of what's going on that way. You probably have solutions that you know that the mammals, us, might actually adapt to in a good way.
Well, you know, Kerry, it does come down to the fact that, you know, many of these incidences have happened at night. You know, obviously, they have tried to implement kind of the flashing signals on the side of the road. But in actuality, you know, when you have an impaired driver, for instance, that may be coming from one of the local establishments, that actually draws the driver's attention away from what's in the middle of the roadway. The solutions that I proposed way back when included, you know, a floodlighting system that would actually illuminate the crosswalk so that you would be able to see exactly what you would see during the daytime. And they would be on timers. Other common sense solutions include, you know, kind of beefing up some of our traffic enforcement. And it's not putting these signs, by the way, you know, it's really interesting. If you're driving in the streets of West Hollywood, you'll notice that there's an even bigger grind in traffic because people are actually stopping at these signs that they've placed in the roadway, which are actually a hazard. And they really do not protect the pedestrians in the roadway. So, you know, it's kind of, it's taking kind of a 360 around it. Obviously, we have to educate our public a little bit more about, you know, being cognizant when they're walking in the crosswalks. It is beefing up some of the enforcement around that to make sure that, you know, our drivers are following the rules of the road and stopping for pedestrians. And it also is, it also involves, you know, kind of coming up with lighting systems that will actually help pedestrians be visible to drivers at night.
We've got about four more minutes as we're talking to Christopher Landevazo. He is a West Hollywood City Council candidate. He'll give out his website and all of his other particulars, his 411. You are listening to the Smart Show. We are live streaming on the Progressive Radio Network. We are also on KPFK 90.7 FM in Los Angeles, 98.7 FM in San Diego, 93.7 in Santa Barbara. Christopher, we do have about four more minutes. What else would you like to tell us about that would make you different or similar in many ways? I assume that there are going to be positive similarities.
Well, you know, I think that one of the biggest things that kind of keeps coming up is development. And there's a lot of things that are tied to that, you know. It's, you know, I keep saying that although our city is changing and growing, that, you know, our values need to remain intact. Obviously, there is a large renter population here in West Hollywood. I am also a renter. And I look forward to someday being able to actually purchase a home here. And that, quite honestly, is not necessarily a reality for most young people who live here in WeHo. And we need to find strategies that include kind of incentivizing, you know, owners of, you know, 10 units or 20-unit apartment buildings to converting those into condos so that we truly have people who are anchored here in our community. One of the other big things that I really want to focus on is just the transparency of government and connecting our residents to our city. Back in 2013, I proposed a system that would allow each one of our residents to log into a Nixle platform, which is a computer-based and also kind of smartphone-based platform that would give real-time updates to things that are going to impact the livability in our city. It would also tell people when certain meetings are so that our residents are more connected and not feeling like they're, you know, left out in the dark when it comes to huge development decisions. I think one of the other things that really kind of sets me apart is the way that I plan to appoint my commissioners. I think that oftentimes our city council members do not pay much mind to the people that they appoint. And usually appointees are those people that have either brought in modest donations or-
Or sexual favors particularly, allegedly.
Well, you know, that's allegedly, allegedly, you know. And I really hate to say this, but, you know, there are amazing city workers that serve our community every single day. And, you know, it's truly sad when you have a council member who is alleged to have partaken in kind of sexual misconduct and also having their deputy, you know, also being involved with kind of scandals. I don't want our city of West Hollywood to be known for those things. And so, you know, I plan to bring in an era of transparency, of accountable government. And when it comes to my commissioners, basically appointing people who truly have a background to advise us in those specific areas. Whether or not you voted for me or not, I will open up that arena to anybody who wants to apply that lives here in the city. And I will truly find the best minds to surround myself with. You know, I will tell you this, Kerry, I do not have all the answers to every question in the city, but I do know that by listening to our residents and finding the very brightest minds that we have in our city, that we will truly make decisions that will make our city a West Hollywood for everyone and in a very inclusive environment.
Christopher Landevazo, West Hollywood City Council candidate for election. Christopher Landevazo, West Hollywood City Council candidate for election tomorrow, March 3.
From Hollywood, it's Harrison.
Harrison with you, and as we wrap up, we are now done with our live coverage. We have talked to six different candidates. I want to give a shout-out to the West Hollywood North Neighborhood Association. They have been tireless and assiduous in making all of this possible, and being able to present every single candidate to you, that would be the candidates that chose, that chose to show up for the voters. And every one of those that have made that choice, and all of them participated in the Candidates Forum we've had on here today. So I just want to thank you. I want to thank Brian Hamilton, my producer, for doing a magnificent job on the phones. And don't forget, tomorrow is voting day. When in doubt, vote it out!